Okay. Maybe we can get started a little bit here. I know there's more people going to be coming in. There was a council on age will meet, council on aging meeting going on, and I know they're coming over as well. Can anybody hear okay? All right. If you can't, just raise a hand and I'll talk louder. I've got anybody else to talk louder. There's an echo. John, there's an echo. They're checking it. Is the echo gone now? Better? They can turn it up a little bit. Let's go. I'm not going to do karaoke, though. Everybody turn your cellphones on silent. And like last year, I, last meeting, I should have reminded everybody to turn it back on. I had two friends that I couldn't reach for the next day because they forgot to turn it back on. So try to remember that. Okay. I hereby call this town meeting to order. First, thanks for coming back so soon. I know we just had annual. It's nice to know we can now complete our budget for the coming fiscal year, and it seems that after a two or three-year effort to rebuild and repair some very old accounting issues, we're on a good track with the Department of Revenue. Thank God for that. Many thanks to the Finance Committee and the whole financial team. This really did take a tremendous effort on all this town's administration, but they seem to have pulled it off. Thank you to all of you. Just doesn't seem like it's enough. Took a lot of hours, but it's honest and it's appreciated. We have many issues coming at us, and they with others are working on plotting a course that's financially safe and sound. I'd also like to say welcome back to the, to the board, to Diana. It's wonderful to also see some younger people, well, younger than me, but stepping up and running for elected office and getting on various boards and committees. All I ask is just do three things: protect, respect, and keep this wonderful place called Hatfield safe. I won't through, run through much of an opening statement since we had our annual town meeting just a few weeks ago. Just remember that if you aren't a registered voter, please sit on the bleachers or on the side where if a count is needed, there's no confusion. Because this is a special town meeting, the vote count or the voting is a little different. There's a couple of items that will require a nine-tenths vote. So if there's one or two people or three people that choose to vote against it, we have to stop and do an actual count. So if it looks okay, we're looking toward unanimous, and if it's not, please speak up and let's talk about it. Thank you. So let's begin.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 1.
Okay. I'm just going to explain for a second. In your two papers that Lydia mentioned at the annual town meeting, one paper says "articles," that's what was posted in the last week or two.
I didn't, I didn't hand the, I didn't hand the motions or the warrants out.
Okay, so you have, so-
They posted. All they have is the motions.
Okay, so you have the motions, and that's the ones they're voting on, which is the actual dollars on it, because when you write the warrant, you don't have the actual dollar amounts on some of them. So the motions in your hand is the actual cost. So go ahead on Article 1. You've seconded that.
Okay. So, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $153.50, the town's apportionment from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund, for transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the town, including but not limited to the Complete Streets Program established in General Law, Chapter 90i, Section 1, and other programs, other programs that support alternative modes of transportation, such funds to be expended at the direction of the Board of Selectmen.
You've heard the motion made in Article 1. And again, all of these articles are recommended by the Finance Committee. And I wanted to compliment all of you guys, because at annual, we spoke about coming back here to handle just our budget and just finances. I know at a special, I always say be cautious, but we talked about bringing in financial items, and this is all it is: budget items. So was there any discussion on Article 1? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article carries. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I make a motion, we take up Article 2.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 2 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash to sum of $258.50 for payment of a prior year school department expense.
Motion's been made and seconded as in your handout. Is there any discussion on Article 2? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move we take up Article 3.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 3 in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $3,000 for payment of a prior year Public Works Department expense.
Second.
You've heard the motion made and seconded in Article 3. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 4.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 4 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash to sum of $187,921.39 to fund fiscal year 2018 deficits as follows. Town hall operations, $2,928.71. Snow and ice, $21,473.68. And the abatement allowance overlay, $163,519.
You've heard the motion as read in Article 4. Is there any discussion? Michael?
Oh, got to turn that mic on.
Still working? There you go.
I think so.
There you go.
I don't know if there's an assessor present or not, but I was wondering if someone could explain the rationale, the detail behind the $163,500 in the abatement allowance overlay deficit, account deficit.
Is one of the assessors here?
No.
No.
No assessor?
No assessor.
Do you guys know it?
Sharon can try.
That'd be helpful, I think, to-
Can you hear me?
Sharon, pull it.
Can you hear me now?
Sharon, you got to put the mic right in front of you.
I know. That's what I'm nervous about. So the abatement overlay allowance from the assessor's office is because they were in ATV, ATV, ATB, excuse me, cases that they had some settlements this year with Brockway and Smith and the church on Main Street.
So, just, just a comment. This, this amount of abatement is the equivalent of $11 million in assessed value. Is that correct? There were those kinds of changes made, reductions in someone's valuation?
It was numerous years' worth of assessments. So it was a long period of time that, that this was adjusted for, so.
Resolved in court.
Resolved in court. This is what the court told us that we had to pay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 5.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 5 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Sewer Water Retained Earnings Fund the sum of $100,000 to fund unforeseen expenses in the FY 2019 water and sewer operating budget.
Second.
You've heard the motion as read in Article 5. Is there any discussion?
William Beldon, Hatfield, Pantry Road. My question is, is, you know, we're spending all this money here out of sewer and water retained earnings and so forth, and we formed a DPW back a few years ago. Why are we using contractors on all these road breaks? You see it time and time again. We have a backhoe up the highway bar, and why isn't that being used? We hire contractors come in, and all it does is drive up the cost of us, and then we're asked to pay for it.
Do you guys want to talk on that? Phil?
The $100,000, the $100,000 is for the water breaks on the Mass. State Highway. There was three water breaks there, and the blacktop was 21 inches thick. So there was no way that the town backhoe could have dug that.
Is there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move we take up Article 6.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move that the town vote to authorize the school committee to enter into a five-year lease for a school van beginning July 1, 2019.
You've heard Article 6 as read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 7.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 7 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a five-year lease for paramedic equipment beginning July 1, 2017, and further to appropriate from free cash to sum of $13,000 to fund the rental under the said lease during fiscal year 2020.
Second.
You've heard the motion read in Article 7. Is there any discussion? Michael?
A question on, on our, on our leasing strategy, I guess, philosophy, particularly the monies in these articles tonight that are coming out of free cash, which I think total this 13 and another 30,000, I think, for an article later on. So we're using this year about $50,000 of free cash to begin the first year of a five or a seven-year lease for a variety of equipment. And I guess my question is, how are we going to fund these payments for the next five to seven years? Because we don't know what free cash is going to be.
So the, the paramedic, the article we're talking about, the paramedic lease, this is the third year of a three-year lease. We decided to fund this three years ago at $13,000 each year ret, because we didn't have the money to pay it all in once. And we actually get this money back because our, being a paramedic service, we have a higher level of service, we get, we, we got, we get more revenue from our ambulance service now. So in some ways, we're, we're being paid back for this. As far as the other, what was your question on the other leasing?
Well, we haven't got to that one yet.
We'll stay with this, with this particular-
Okay. Did that, did that hap-
But, so, so this is the, year three of a, of a three-year lease? Is that what you said?
Five.
Of a five-year lease?
Five.
And years one and two were paid out of free cash, or were they paid out of the operating budget raising?
I, I don't recall.
Because my question is, we don't always know what our free cash level is going to be, so if we have to continue to pay this out of our operating budget in the future, that means something else has got to give. That's just a, a point.
Yeah. We, we suspect we'll at least have another $13,000 in free cash next year to, to pay this.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I make a motion, we take up Article 8.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 8 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash to sum of $50,000 for the purpose of funding a study to determine the extent of inflow and infiltration from the town's water system.
Second.
Mo, mo, the motion's been seconded as read for Article 8. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move we take up Article 9.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 9 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a seven-year lease for a new ambu, ambulance, including a Jaws of Life, beginning July 1, 2019, and further to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the ambulance trust fund, $3,000 from ambulance surplus, and $31,000 from free cash for a total sum of $54,000 to fund the rental during FY 2020.
Second.
Motion's been seconded as read in Article 9. Is there any discussion?
Liz Kugler, Porter Avenue. I'm just curious, how many miles do we presently have on our ambulance? Does anybody know?
Say it a little louder.
How many mi, what's the mileage on the current ambulance that we have?
On the what?
Yeah, 17 years old, and actually, miles is not the best, probably hours of it running is the best way to measure how much it's been, it's been used, but 17 years is pretty old for an ambulance.
Um, because I was watching, I think, a budget meeting, and someone said there's only like 34,000 miles on it. Um, you know, my job, I transport babies all over Western Mass, Boston, on occasion of Vermont, and we have well over 100,000 miles. So that's sort of my concern. I don't know how old our ambulances are, but-
It's 17 years old. And probably the, the more, and if, more of a concern would be the infrastructure in the ambulance itself is-
And the technology.
-17 years old. The technology's 17 years old. The, the struts, all the suspension on it, it's not a very good ride anymore, um, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 10.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 10 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $11,000 to fund electrical wiring for the town hall generator.
Second.
Motion's been seconded as Article 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 11.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 11 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash to sum of $140,000 to fund security apparatuses for the schools.
Motion's been read and seconded as art, under Article 11. Is there any discussion? All those in, oh, go, please.
Tim Boudreau, Main Street. What, what security apparatus? What is it?
Wait, Tim, she needed to hear your name.
I couldn't hear your name.
Oh, Tim Boudreau, 83 Main Street. Joe's old house. Okay.
Go ahead, Sean.
I think the bulk-
Sean, put the speaker, put the mic close.
Well, they need to turn it on.
Oh.
Try that.
The bulk of it is-
Nope. Speaker's not up. Is that speaker?
The bulk of it is a fire alarm panel here at Smith Academy that is original to this building and doesn't do sort of basic things that we would suspect one would do, like tell you where in the building the fire is. So we're replacing that. That's the major cost. There's also some lights.
Locks.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, locks for the doors that would have it be keyed the same. Over the years, different doors have been keyed differently. There's also-
Security warning lights.
Yeah, there's, um, there's blue lights at the elementary school for like exterior warning if there's an emergency in the school. That's, that's primarily the-
Yeah. And if I could add to that, this was a recommendation of the fire department, the police department, and the schools themselves. So it was a, it was a combined request to move forward for this funding.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I would like to recuse myself prior to the discussion of Article 12.
Please do. Thank you. Diana's recusing herself because the next article has to do with the street she lives on. It's only fair and right. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 12.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 12 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash to sum of $47,000 to extend the water main service approximately 800 feet on Straits Road.
Second.
You've heard the motion read and seconded under Article 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. On 13? On Article 13, Lydia's letting me know as this is read, the motion is going to be a little bit different than what you have in, in your hand, and it's going to be because it's going to say the, the funding of the general stabilization fund. Years ago, we only had one stabilization fund. Now there's a town hall stabilization fund. So we just wanted to keep it clear that you know it's going into the general stabilization fund.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 13.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 13 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash to sum of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the general stabilization fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded as read in Article 13. Is there any discussion? Michael?
Yeah, the obvious. Could you tell us what the final tally, balance will be in our general stabilization account as a result of adding $100,000 to it?
The, um, the balance as of 2/28/19 was $303,978.21. We haven't taken anything out of it since then. We may have earned some amount of interest, although I guess probably not much. And so this would take it to roughly $403,978.21.
Any other discussion?
Russell Powell, 8 Elm Street. Could someone just explain what the stabilization, stabilization fund is? Is this free cash? Is this something different? What does it do?
Go right ahead.
This, I mean, the stabilization fund really could be used for anything we wanted, I guess, as a town. It would require a two-thirds majority vote to remove money from it. So in the past recent years, we've used it to fix some errors that we had in accounting that resulted in deficits in certain accounts. I mean, I think traditionally, it's been considered to be used for unexpected emergency-type situations that come up, and that's why it requires a two-thirds, although that's not a strict requirement. We've used it in the past to fund budgetary items for the schools when we were facing state aid cuts and other things. So it's really a savings account for the town. It can be used for whatever the town decides. But this would bring it back, we checked the other day, and this would bring it back to the level it was at approximately seven-ish years ago. Don't quote me on the exact timeframe, but somewhere six, eight, nine years ago, before we started taking money out of it in recent years to fix some of the issues that we had. So this would bring us back to roughly right around that amount of money, so.
Years ago, when I was on finance, I had spoken up similar, and I said it was the town's money, and someone corrected me, "It's your money, and it's your super savings money." And the only way it can come out of there is for you people to come to a town meeting and approve it to come out of there. So now they're putting the money back in there that you allowed to borrow years ago. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 14.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 14 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $46,000 for the purpose of refurbishing the community preservation fund.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement.
Got to correct that.
Reimbursement.
No, reimbursing.
Reimbursement.
He just said it.
Okay.
I stand corrected. Reimbursement.
The reason they had to do the exact correct wording is if it was just for the purpose of fun, of, excuse me, if it was just for the purpose of funding the community preservation, that is an incorrect word. It is reimbursing what was not repaid to them a few years ago, and that came up at annual. It was an accounting error. So under Article 14, are there any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move we take up Article 15.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 15 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zino.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of funding the 350th anniversary special fund.
You've heard the motion made and seconded as read in Article 15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 16.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 16 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the unemployment fund.
Second.
The mo, the motion's been seconded under Article 16 as read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Mor, yeah, Moriarty. Here I go again. I do it every year. Mr. Jaworski. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I, I move we take up Article 17.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 17 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $10,521,854 for, inconsistent with the separate purposes and separate line items set forth in the version of the FY 2020 budget prepared by the Finance Committee, approved May 9, 2019, and amended June 4, 2019, on file with a town clerk, and to meet said appropriations as follows. From taxation, $9,547,797. From cable TV enterprise fund, $88,878. From water and sewer enterprise fund, $735,763. From ambulance reserve, $73,115. From school choice-
Ambulance revenue. Ambulance revenue.
Ambul, okay. Ambulance revenue, $73,115. From school's choice, $12,000. From cemetery perpetual care interest, $500. And from free cash, $63,801.
Second.
Okay. The, the article's been read and seconded. This is the actual budget itself. This is the larger paper that you have in your hand. What we usually, what I usually like to try to do is just take-
That should be amended. That's amended tonight should be amended.
She's trying to keep us very legal here. As she's talking about the wording of what he just read, as I go through this, we're just going to take each page or each section, and I'll go through it. If you have a question with those sections, raise your hand. And even if we passed it and you found something you'd like to ask backwards, that's okay. We'll go through it. We'll take time.
Can I just explain?
Go right ahead.
What we were just talking about, and, and this is how nitpicky we need to be sometimes. When Marlene and I were going over the budget, just because of some rounding up and rounding down numbers, two numbers, free cash and what was going into the financial reserves changed by a dollar. Tonight, the Finance Committee and the Selectmen had to re-vote to approve the budget. So I'd like to reread this and add, when it says, "and amended June 4, 2019, and June 25, 2019," because technically, there was another amendment made tonight for a dollar.
Okay.
Okay? So where are we?
So why don't you reread the whole article?
Did, did we make a motion and second?
Yes. Yes, we did.
Okay. So then I have to make a motion to amend-
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to amend Article 17 by adding after the words "June 4, 2019," the words "and amended June 25, 2019." Everything else is exactly the same. So now I've made a motion to make the amendment. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to amend what she read to correct a rounding down by a dollar. Anybody have any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye on the amendment for the dollar. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now we're back on the budget itself. Okay, that's a lot of work for a dollar.
You want me to read it, the whole thing then, or?
No, you're okay with that. All right, so you're going to take your, Michael?
Yeah, you might, well, let me ask you a question first. I'm not sure whether we need to amend this even more. But you guys, I haven't had a chance to really look at these numbers until tonight, but if you look at our summary page, which is like the, next to the last page, at the very bottom, it shows that one of our sources of funds is something called Other Funds. It's 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth column over, 1, 2, 3, fourth col- fifth column over.
Which heading, which heading, Michael, which heading?
Well, it's at the, next to the last page, on the back of the last page. Do you want to turn it that way? It's under-
Michael, I think I know the answer. This is like, like Jeopardy.
Okay.
That number is on Article 17, the ambulance revenue, school choice, and the cemetery perpetual care interest.
Okay, so that-
You got those three numbers.
Okay, and, and how about the enterprise fund total, which is on the, on the, on this sheet, 824, 641, and that's different than, than the motion. So, question. That's my question.
Do you know what he's pointing out?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying, Finance Committee? This, this shows enterprise fund sources of 824, 641, and the article is saying 735, 763. Unless we're using, we're using those funds somewhere else, which is probably the case.
Right, I think if you, yeah, there's, if you look on the articles, yeah, yeah.
Some of the debt is paid out of the regular, some of the debt is-
Marlene, do you want to explain that, please?
The enterprise fund includes water and sewer and the cable TV.
Marlene, talk close to the mic.
Okay. Enterprise fund includes water and sewer enterprise fund and the cable TV enterprise fund. So that's combined.
Okay, and in one of the other articles, we were using one of the enterprise funds as well, right? To fund something? I'm trying to-
I'm sorry, say that again.
I can't find it right now, but in one of the other previous articles, did we use-
The sewer break.
The sewer break, okay.
We used water and sewer retained earnings.
You have to come to class more, Michael. Okay, so on your form here, on the first page under General Government, take a minute and look through that and see if you have any questions on that page. I do see I get a $1.80 raise, so thank you very much. If I stay in this long enough, I'm going to reach 100 bucks. Okay, so on the second page, under Public Safety, Education, and Public Works, and again, if you have a question, back to the first one, it's still wide open. So we'll look at the next one, Health and Human Services, General Fund Debt Issue Name and ATM. Yes?
Yep, Sean Robinson, Lindsay Road, Chair of the Council on Aging. I would just like to point out, as we're considering the Council on Aging budget, to everyone what it is. You know, we're talking about a budget under $100,000 for a town where, you know, over two-thirds of the folks are over 60. We've got several programs and groups where over 30, 40 people participate, and the town voted down renovations at the last town meeting for the town hall after actually many members of the Select Board, or previous members of the Select Board, had indicated that they would support that and ultimately didn't. And so I just want to, just bring all of our attention to that fact. Less than $100,000 being spent on the Council on Aging, where many of us know there's lots of elderly people in this town who don't have a son or daughter nearby, who rely on the Council on Aging. They're in the basement, and currently, we're eliminating their ramp, we're putting an elevator in, but because an elevator can't be used during a fire, there will be no exit for anyone in a wheelchair unless they're carried out. And we don't have anyone based down there. My understanding is, what's been indicated to the Council on Aging, is that they'll have to wait for a fire, a firefighter to come and lift them out. So I just want to draw attention to that so that, moving forward, we can talk about that number as a town and really actually have that number reflect our priorities and reflect our population. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, so now we're over to, yes, Ed.
Ed Lusko, 131, 136 Main Street. The only question I have here is on the Board of Health, top of the page, $28,112. Could I have a breakdown of that?
Anybody here from, anybody here from Board of Health? Carrie?
Carrie Flaherty, Primrose Path, Chair of the Board of Health. I'm not sure exactly what you're asking me.
What I'm asking is, how much is the chair getting? How much is the two members getting? And how much is the assistant getting?
I got to be honest, off the top of my head, I can't break those numbers down. I, I submitted my budget. I get about, I think it's $4,200 a year as the chair, and then it's about maybe $600 less for each other member. And our health agent gets paid $28 and change an hour, and he's eight hours a week. So it was set years ago as a straight thing, but it's gone up each year with the COLAs that have been given. Marlene, do you happen to have my sheet? Sorry, I didn't bring it with me tonight. So out of that $28,112, for this year, $12,396 is for our health agent at a $28 an hour pay, which he works eight hours a week. And the rest is broken up amongst the three board members like it always has been.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, so unclassified budgets, enterprise funds? Yes, Michael?
Yes, since, I'm glad that Sean came up and spoke about the Council on Aging and some of the issues there. And I must admit, I'm really confused, and I, because he brought this up, I think it still falls within the context of the article. I don't know why the town hall renovations are not improving the COA area of the town hall. And we're going to end up rehashing this, I suspect, as we did at at least two town meetings prior to this, where I brought up that there was an article being proposed at, regarding the town hall renovations, which would have been redundant to an article that was voted in October of 2016 perhaps, which voted, and has never since been unvoted or repealed, a quarter of a million dollars for the renovation of the basement of the town hall that would expand the kitchen space for the Council on Aging, that would take over the building inspector's office.
Okay, but Michael, Michael-
So I'm just saying that-
You are getting out, you are getting out of the four corners of the article of this. That's-
Okay.
We're talking about this budget.
Sean should look into this because there is money-
I know Sean made a point. He put, Sean made a good point, and he made it clear, but we are working on this budget right here at this point. So we're on unclassified budgets and enterprise funds. On the final page is debt issue name and ATM reference and water enterprise. That's the whole budget. On the final page, it's just the special articles that were voted prior to this. And they were voted at annual, correct. Are there any questions on this at this point? All those in favor of this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Article carries. Okay. I just want to say, much thanks to John Novak and your team. You guys put these meetings on. I know it takes a lot of time. I know you put them on YouTube and the newspaper. And again, keep remembering that we have a communication problem. There's a lot of issues going on out there. There's a lot of things, such as Sean said, such as planning board. There's a lot of things that have been going on all these years, but because we don't read the papers anymore, we all do electronic and social media, and maybe we even tune that out. But we're, I know they're working on a, on a, on the website program. It's still going to take some time, but communication is a problem because if we don't communicate, we separate. If we don't communicate, anger prevails. We have to learn how to communicate because we're friends, we're neighbors, we're cousins, we're family. And when we don't communicate, we start getting angry with each other, and we can't, we can't do that.
Joe, can I, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank and congratulate our COA Director on her upcoming retirement. I thought maybe Jane would be in the audience, but I don't see her. Maybe Bobby will let her know, or Ed. But I do want to thank Jane for all the services that she's helped provide the seniors over 30-plus years as our CEO Director in the town of Hatfield. So we'll miss her, but she, she certainly is go, I hope, going to enjoy her retirement, and it's well deserved. So I just wanted to thank Jane.
Joe, can I just say one thing? I just want to say that, I, I, I just want to speak to what Sean said and, and the concerns that Michael brought up, and that I just don't want you to think that those things fell on deaf ears. I share your concerns, and I'm committed to working with you, Sean, moving forward, and how we can better serve our seniors in a variety of ways. So I just don't want you to think that we just can't really solve it in the budget article, but I just want you to know that.
So again, thank you very much for coming. Please enjoy your summer. This is so appreciative. We can get this behind us after so many years of effort, and I hereby dissolve this special town meeting.